Benningworth meeting, John Monroe, March 8th special meeting, come to order. First item is, I'll take a moment to review the minutes of the meeting.
This is Ann. I had just one correction on page 2344, seven lines up from the bottom. I think the word renovation should be innovation. Section 1 of the law encourages innovation in residential development. This was in connection with discussion of the Solar PUD.
If not, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
A motion to accept the minutes with one minor correction for February meeting. To the motion, do I have a second?
This is Ann. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Do we have two February meetings or just one? One February meeting, correct?
One.
Just one.
We're gonna have two in March, technically speaking.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve, listen, motion carries. Now, as usual, as I discussed, I want...
Uh, it's, uh, SRH TJM for the subdivision, formerly known as Arrowhead.
Yeah, I keep losing this.
Jim, this is Travis. Can you hear me?
Yep, Travis, we have you there, and I've already made you a call host.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen then, if that's okay?
Yep. Yep. You wanna share your screen, please do.
Good, I presume you can see that?
Yep, I can see it just fine.
All right.
There's nobody else from, there's nobody else from your team or your applicant that I need to have on, correct this, you?
No, not for this one. Joe D'Anabel, I think, is representing later on.
Yeah, I see him there for later on.
Yep. No, Rich is not with us tonight, so. Um, Mary Beth Sullivan, I believe, is on the line.
Oh, yeah, all on mute here. Give me a second.
If you can find her. Yep. All right, good evening, everyone. Travis Mitchell with Environmental Design Partnership, representing the applicant SRH TJM LLC, and Richard Skimmerhorn in the subdivision lands of SRH TJM. I'm gonna slip through some of these slides pretty quickly, as you've seen many of them before with this application and the adjoining. Project location shown here, we've got Route 9 to the west. The project site, it's a, about a 23 and 1/2 acre site, highlighted by the red, the red boundary around along the property there. On the town zoning map, we're located, it's split between the R1 and R2 zones. Close up of the zoning map, roughly, the property outlines, outlined as shown, again, split between R1 and R2. The subdivision layout remains the same as you saw when we last presented, I think toward the end of December. We've got it overlaid on Google Earth, as we've done with this several times before. It does remain exactly as we have shown you previously, except that we've included the male kiosk, which I did mention when we presented the neighboring project, and we added the language that was requested about the ability to do some type of future path on the HOA lands. We, as I mentioned last time, there was a collective traffic study done for this project and the neighboring two projects. Grayman Peterson, on behalf of the town, reviewed that study and provided their concurrence with the findings in that there'll be no significant impact of the projects. You've also seen this previously. This is our cross-easement for access and utility mapping, showing how each of the two neighboring projects can be constructed independently of each other, and obviously eventually with a joined road network. My approval process slide, as I mentioned, we were last before the board in late December. Here again tonight to review the preliminary plat, we did submit detailed plans in December and again in February. I don't think this one got referred to the county. Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to, if not, we need to get a county referral going, and also make a, start a seeker action. Again, as with the neighboring property, I'd expect this will be an unlisted action. We did complete a full long form, and would ask that you initiate coordinated review tonight. As I mentioned, with a sign-off from the town's traffic engineer last month, LeBerge was also asked to review the combined stormwater from the two neighboring projects. They provided their sign-off last month. We received some initial comments from the highway department, which there are nothing significant in there, and yet to receive comments from Jesse Fish on the water, but I wouldn't expect there'll be anything significant there, as it's a pretty basic system. That's all I have. I'd ask if the board's ready that we consider a public hearing for your normal April meeting. I think that would give us enough time for the seeker coordinated review to come back, and also the county referral.
I think, Travis...
Yeah.
We actually, we started the seeker action on this in January, so...
You could've. That's my apologies if you did. I couldn't remember, and I didn't have good notes on it.
Yeah, we started that as well beyond the 30 days. We got one comment letter back from DEC, and they concurred with the plan of board acting as lead agent. I have to check on the county referral. I'll check on that tomorrow. I think it was done, but I'm not certain. And the public hearing for this is already set. It's set for next Monday.
No, no, you're, yeah, you're mixing up projects, Jim. The public hearing for next Monday is the Arrowhead subdivision.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, then this is the, okay, then, yeah, you're, okay. Then, yeah, we do have to do the seeker referral. We have to start from the ground zero on this one.
Yeah, I thought so, okay. Appreciate it.
So county referral, seeker, and, um, set the public hearing.
Yeah, I think we've got all the review portions back, and I think because of the odd stagger in the meetings, that we do have enough time to complete the 30-day coordinated review and the county referral, if the board were inclined to set the public hearing.
Okay.
Travis, this is Ann Perdue. I've got a question.
Hi, Ann.
Relative to the open space, what kind of provision are you proposing to put in place to ensure that that open space is maintained and preserved as such?
Yeah, so it'll be part of the homeowners association documents. It'll be owned by the homeowners association.
Will there be a clause in that deed that no further development is permissible?
Sure, I would expect so. Yep.
Should we be making note of that on the subdivision plat?
That's fine, we can do that.
So the homeowners association will be responsible for not only owning it, but preserving and managing, maintaining that property?
I think the other, the more important thing, Ann, is there could be no further development. And that should be on both the SRH side of the deed and the Arrowhead metal side.
Does some of this open space, does some of this open space include stormwater management ponds?
Yeah, so in Moreau, the town requires the homeowners association to own and maintain the stormwater management basin. So yes, they are within the homeowners association lands.
So that's part of the open air, open space calculation?
Uh, yeah, I could double-check it, but I'd have to double-check to be sure, Ann.
Yeah, I'm only asking because I think one of the primary purposes of a cluster development is to ensure that there is open space, and I would think if you had to have stormwater management anyway, that that really wouldn't be open space in the sense you'd consider for this type of development. I think you're showing something over six acres presently, but I'm curious to how much of this is really a utility use and not a preservation?
Sure, I can provide the exact accounting of the, of the open space and cluster perimeter compliance to Jim for his review for you.
Okay.
Ultimately to you, but I can push that over to Jim. Yep.
Okay, great.
Hey Travis, this is John Arnold. I noticed that the centralized HOA between Roads C and A, that there is a large access area over on Road A. This looks like a building lot that was left out. Is there any particular purpose for that being that wide?
Hmm, let me try and find a map that...
It's actually right on Road A, right across from the stormwater retention pools.
Uh, here.
Yes.
Does that look right?
Yeah.
Yep, and also up in here, yep. No, it's just, it's part of the, that natural drainage course that comes through here, kind of flows through like this, so, yeah, yep.
So is that, is that set up as like a swell, or is it just, it just happens to be an area that'll help drain water to the retention pools?
So there'll be, there'll be a swell through it, certainly not the entire width of the property, of the open space, rather, but the, you know, the drainage course does flow through that area.
Okay. Are you planning on road names eventually here?
Yeah, I've actually got them, no, yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's odd the way our meetings fell on this particular one. We've actually got all the roads named, and, you know, we missed the meeting, and then with your staggered meeting here, we kind of lost a submittal through the cracks. But yeah, it's, the roads are named, and I'll push that over to you with the next submittal.
And on that, score Travis before we get...
All right, and my next question is...
Yeah.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, before I forget, we're gonna need address numbering, you know, on both this, Arrowhead and this.
You got it.
So you gotta get with...
Travis, my next question is...
Yep, understood.
Travis, my next question is, this is not hooking up the, this is not hooking up the sewer, right?
That's, not at this time yet. That's right.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this map that I have, the paper map, I'm showing white block, looks like the building, and then there's like a hash mark thing behind every one of them. Is that location of septic, or is that the back part of the roof?
Nope, so likely what you're looking at is the sizing for a septic system. That's correct.
Okay, so it's just showing that there's room to put it in there, and...
That's right.
Okay, and the last question is, as I've been bugging you with this project about access to the park, we're gonna actually be able to finalize that discussion with the project just south of this, this evening. On the previous development or subdivision plan that we talked about last meeting, there was an access way from Road A over to the HOA to get to that. I don't see it on the map I'm looking at now. Is that on the previous map, but it hasn't shown up on this?
Yeah, so again, with the carryover, so this, this map represents just this portion, and the lines that you see on the neighboring parcel are just an older rendition of it. So, yes, we've actually, if I show you...
So they weren't updated for that?
No, and it doesn't show here either, but...
Oh, it's okay, as long as it's there.
It's there.
That's okay.
No, it's there for sure. Yep.
So I was just checking to make sure, because there's one thing that showed up on this one. Is there some type of an access drive to the stormwater retention pond?
Yep.
But it's listed as being an access road for that. I wanted to make sure that wasn't now our access to the HOA to get to the park?
No, we, just as you had asked last time, we moved those lots apart.
Right, because that stormwater management will be fenced, right?
You know, it can be if needed. It's something that I'm gonna work on with Paul Joseph. He asked that same question. We have as good a soils as we get here. There's no sign of groundwater, and we're not required to fence them, and we prefer not to, but certainly if Paul wants them fenced, we'll fence them. Yep.
You don't expect there to ever be water, you know, a foot or two deep in it, then?
I do not, and, you know, what I'd suggest is that we can set up a provision in the homeowners association language so that if in the event, you know, we're found to be wrong down the road, that the HOA senses them. But I'd prefer not to have the fencing there, and I think the neighborhood would as well if it's not required.
Okay, all right. That's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hey Travis, my favor.
Oh, wait, I did have one.
Travis, I have. Look at any slight detail. You got the water surfaces, you're running 2-inch copper water services, or is it just a standard drawn year in?
Yeah, no, they won't be 2-inch copper. They'll be, they'll be, you know, 3/4 inch. Yeah, I'll take a look at that. It won't be 2-inch copper.
Yeah, 3/4 on the short side, 1 inch on the long side?
Mm-hmm, typically.
I think that's through this, yeah. I just, I didn't know if you noticed or not, but I saw it there. And then again, of course, you know how I feel about the sewer. I think that the sewer should go in, so I'll just wanna make a note of that for the...
Understood, appreciate it.
Travis, this is Ann Perdue, and I concur with Mike's view that using a sewer system would be preferable. And you mentioned the issue is cost. Are we talking about the real property tax, or the usage fee, or both?
Well, it's really the, what I guess would be the real property tax, the ad valorem tax that pays for the debt service over the next 30 years. It's just, it's not, from what I've seen so far, and at some point, I imagine we'll get some updated numbers, but from what I've seen so far, it's not something that's affordable for a single-family home.
And so you're not, this property's not currently within the sewer district, which is subject to the tax?
That's correct.
Okay.
Travis, can I ask you a question on this? How does, how does, and you've got a whole lot of experience with this, how does the health department look at that when there's a sewer main going by the property? Don't they, don't they usually prefer the property to be hooked up to it?
I mean, we'd all prefer it to be hooked up to it, but there is no regulation that I'm aware of that requires it.
Mike, it's my understanding that that's a matter of a local law, and it's one that we just don't have yet. Some communities do have that, where if you're within a certain district of either a water or sewer district, you have to hook on it. But we don't have that here yet.
Okay, thank you.
And Travis, just a quick question, it's something I missed on my notes here. This being a housing development, it's just gonna have a street sign out front, right? You're not planning on signing called Arrowhead Meadows, or...
Yeah, no, that's a very good question, John, and I've actually worked with the Michaels Group, who we expect to be building these, as they did with the Winterberry project down the road. And we, they have developed a similar sign that we'll be pushing to in the next set of drawings to what is down the road at the Winterberry project.
Okay, because I hadn't seen any sign locations or things. I didn't know.
Yep. No, it's not in the package that you have right now, but it will be part of the next submittal for your review.
Travis, one more thing, is I see you got PVC pipe in here. We're not using ductile? That's a Jesse call, I understand, but...
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's up to Jesse. We prefer to use PVC, and I think he has allowed it previously, but ultimately, that'll be Jesse's call. If he wants ductile, we'll use ductile.
Correct, yeah, just thrown by I didn't know. Thank you.
Yep, yep, no problem, thanks.
And Travis, this is Ann. What is the, what would you say the breakpoint is in terms of affordable cost of participating in the public sewer?
Yeah, that's a good question, Ann. And the challenge that we have right now, and, you know, I've been told, and we've been told on occasions, that the cost, as it was laid out in 2017, which was somewhere between $2,500 and $3,000, is what it works out to be for an average single-family home in this, in this type of subdivision, so that's somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,500 to $3,000 a year for 30 years, which that is just not, it's not even close to affordable. So we think what, you know, what is affordable? In the, you know, the New York State Comptroller sets a threshold of affordability above which it requires their review and approval for this type of project, and the last I knew, that number was somewhere around $675 a year. So, you know, pretty much the state sets a threshold on what they determine, you know, what they consider affordable. And I would, I would look for somewhere in that neighborhood as a, as a starting point.
Travis, are the costs, much of a difference between putting in the infrastructure for a sewer system comparison with putting in septic systems? Are the costs pretty close?
Well, you know, typically, yeah, it's a good question, Mike. So typically, you know, a sewer system in this type of soil, it is going to cost more than a septic system, no matter what, because a septic system here, you have the best soil that you can have for a septic. But if it were just the infrastructure cost itself, then, you know, you, the benefit of the sewer outweighs it. The challenge here is that we're paying, you know, potentially, not only the infrastructure within this project, but the infrastructure to get the sewer, you know, all the way to exit 17 on Route 9. And it just, supporting that additional infrastructure, which is necessary to get the sewer there, is just not, it isn't something that's affordable for a single-family home. The commercial properties along Route 9 are a different story, because, you know, in that area, you really need the sewer in order to reach that maximum development potential. Here, you know, a septic system, as, you know, example through all Moreau, through the residential development that's happened there so far, a septic system can work, can and does work effectively and efficiently. So that's really the issue that we've got.
Thank you.
Forward, any further questions?
Well, I got one more. We heard anything from our schools or anything? Somebody put out a note, and we notified schools, so we heard, because we've got quite a cluster of people.
Right, I notified them for the first one that's coming up next week in regards to seeker, and I did not hear anything back from them.
I think somewhere, somebody, I mean, this happens every time we adopt someone, we don't hear back from them. I think, do we have a liaison from our town to the school? Somebody, we need to have something on the record that says the school is either okay with this or not.
I can check with them. I have no problem with checking.
Because they're in a position right now, I don't mean to get out of the beat here, but they're in a position right now where we may be bringing another school to our district, and we should, we should make sure that they know that there's 140 homes at least coming into our town before we get too far ahead of you. I would like to hear a definite answer, either gay or gay, so...
That's one of the reasons why we included the school district in our notification to seeker. Historically, they have ignored it?
Yeah, and that's...
But I will, I will make that a... I will call tomorrow directly.
I appreciate that, thank you. I just, I think it's important.
I mean, your point's well taken. It's kind of extenuating circumstances here when we have, you know, three subdivisions, four subdivisions coming in, in this proximity, in this volume.
Right.
It's kind of exceptional, so I'll reach out tomorrow. I'll call the district superintendent.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
And I'll try and get, I'll try and get word before the first public hearing next week on the Arrowhead side.
Yeah, I think it's good business.
Oh, you're through. You should, yeah. Well, again, Travis, you managed to confuse me, which is not difficult, like doing two at once. I'm not sure, have we declared seeker for Arrowhead?
We have for Arrowhead, but not for this one. But he is requesting that we do it for this one. And we do, that's where I got confused. We have a public hearing set for Arrowhead next week. We do not for this one.
I just went down with this was Arrowhead.
Really gotta name this pretty soon here, Travis, this SRH thing's not working.
Crystal Ball, what could you like to do as far as seeker is concerned with this project? Nothing's going down. We made a determination. I would...
Peter, this is Ann. Don't we have to wait for the county to get back to us with, or let their time lapse before we make a determination?
No.
No, the county's not involved in that decision.
Ann, yeah, we're not actually making a determination on seeker, just declaring yourselves lead agency and initiating coordinated review.
Okay, I understand. Sorry, I misunderstood, Peter.
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem. Thank you.
So you're looking for a motion for us to declare lead agency and list this as an unlisted action, or just...
That's what we're looking for.
All right, so I make a motion that we declare lead agency on this, and that we list this as an unlisted. It's John Arnold making the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, for the coordinated review, we will be reaching out to DEC, DOH, DOT, the Attorney General's Office, the county planning and DPW, and the school district.
We got one. Motion has been made to declare SRH TJM subdivision as an unlisted action, and for Benningworth and Tom Moreau to assume the role of lead agency for that environmental review. To the motion, do I have a second?
This is Meredith. This is Ann, I second. Oh, Meredith, you go ahead.
Trish, this is Meredith. I'll make a second.
Don't fight. Motion has been made and seconded to declare SRH TJM as an unlisted action, and for Benningworth and Tom Moreau to assume the role of lead agency. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, this one is not really too controversial. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We got there. Is there anything else you'd like to consider or do? Do you think you have enough information to go to a public hearing?
Yeah, I think we do.
If you feel as you do, then we will need a motion to reflect and such.
Um, I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the, the SRHTJM subdivision on, I don't have my calendar, April?
19th.
19th at, uh, 7:05.
Yeah, we already have one slot filled with the PUD.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was 7:01.
Motion has been made to schedule a public hearing for SRHTJM subdivision for April 19th. To the motion, do I have a second?
This is Meredith. I'll make the second.
Motion been made and seconded to schedule a public hearing for SRHTJM subdivision for April 19th. Further discussion?
You need to list the time?
Seven, do we need to list the time? 7:05.
Since there's no further discussion, this is not too controversial. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, and Travis, I would just remind you that you have to put up the public hearing sign 10 days prior on the property. That's right. So don't forget that by April 9. Will do.
This, Mr. Commissioner, turn those fair play. Do you have any further questions of us?
I do not. Thank you all for your time. We'll see you next week.
Thank you. Next item I have in the agenda for this evening is Saron for Jacoby Farms and Almero.
Uh, hold on here. I'm getting caught up with you here. What's the next one, Mr. Chairman?
Jacoby Farms.
Okay. Let me get, um.
Hello?
Whoa, Joe?
Jim, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Hey, not, not, not bad. Um.
Hold on here. I'm, uh, getting caught up with you here. Just hold on a second.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna make you a co-host, cause you, you have a screen you want to share?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Says you have disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah, I'm making you a co-host to do it that way.
Okay.
So you should be getting that capability anytime now.
I got it. Here we go. Okay. Believe everybody sees the cover slide?
Yep. And I've got Johnny, Simone, and Anthony Saron on. I got them unmuted as well.
Excellent. I think that's everybody. Johnny, Anthony, anybody else that you need unmuted for this conversation? Um, we'll, we'll, we'll cover that if they need it. I am ready to go if everybody else is ready.
Hello, sir.
That's okay. We now have Carla on the list as well.
Okay.
Hello, Carla.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Good evening. Joe Dannable with the Environmental Design Partnership here on behalf of Saron Builders in their application for a 23 lot subdivision to be known as Jacoby Farms. Uh, we last presented this project in December of 2020 as a concept application, uh, at which time we had 27 lots, uh, and some additional land. Um, just so everyone's clear, we've, uh, taken away and we are not combining any land from the north with the south. We're strictly only dealing with the lands on the north, north side of Rec Road. There we go. Um, so slide is north. Uh, what we are looking at is highlighted in yellow, that is the Jacoby Farm North. Uh, the land immediately north of that up in here is the Arrowhead and SHR TJM subdivision that you were just speaking about. Uh, Rec Road here, Gansfort Road, Bluebird Road in that location. Uh, we are a 12.74 acre parcel. We are located in the R2 zone, which permits single-family residential as a use. As we work through the density computations, which have been provided to the town at the concept, we are permitted a density of 23 lots on the north side of the property. Uh, again, here's just a, uh, existing conditions. We're dealing with, uh, existing farm fields, abandoned pasture fields. I think everybody in the town has gone to the park at least once and has a, a general idea and understanding of the existing conditions on that property. Again, vacant pasture land, uh, the primary access road to the Harry Beetar Park. Um, and just so everyone's aware, there is additional land on the south side of the road, a separate tax parcel, um, that is known as Jacoby Farm South, and we will be coming in with the applications for that in the upcoming months. So here's the, uh, general overview of the layout. Uh, again, we have 23 lots. We've, uh, created a plan very similar to what was reviewed during the concept. We're providing, uh, three new town roads, Road A, B, and C, uh, that provides access to all 23 of the single-family lots. No individual driveway will be connected to Lenox Boulevard or, or Rec Road. Um, there's about 1,500 linear feet of new town road. Um, our proposed building setbacks as part of the cluster are a 10-foot rear, 25-foot front yard, and a seven and a half foot side yard. Stormwater will be managed on site in a series of infiltration basins and underground stormwater practices. Uh, water will be connected to the municipal water supply for the town of Almero. Um, sanitary provisions, individual septic systems on individual, uh, lots. Uh, as we are looking at the, uh, plan, you see the roads. This is the house, typical house driveway. And then in the rear of every yard is a septic system outlined, identifying that we have plenty of room to do that. Um, this heavy line here is the limits of the open space, uh, different than the, uh, previous applications. We're proposing to have, uh, deed-restricted privately-owned open space. So, um, there will not be any HOA lands associated with this application. Um, stormwater is being managed, uh, in these areas here and here. We are working with the town on stormwater management and how we're gonna handle it over on Road C. Uh, we've had, um, had a meeting with the highway department, uh, Jim Martin, and, and, uh, there are some, uh, minor changes in the plans that we are looking to, to move forward and finalize that stormwater, uh, in accordance. But again, I think that was a very productive meeting. Uh, one of the things that came out of that meeting is we were proposing Road A and Road B to be one-way, uh, streets that are 16 feet wide. Um, as a result of that meeting, those streets will be widened to 22 feet and be, um, full access, uh, travel in both directions. We're proposing street trees along the, uh, uh, side of the road to create a street, streetscape consistent with the park-like setting to what this project leads to. This is the, uh, overall grading and utility plan showing stormwater management systems, septic systems, the lots, the grading associated with it, um, and, and everything of that nature. Ultimately, this project will be reviewed by the, uh, the town's reviewing engineer. I don't recall seeing a letter from them, so I'm not sure that they have reviewed it yet. Um, certainly, we think that is, uh, going to be appropriate here in the upcoming months to get a review by the town engineer. Um, just for an overall view, this is Jacoby Farms North, uh, the intended layout for Jacoby Farms South. Uh, you see that all of the, uh, roadways align with each other. Uh, we're not putting any private driveways out onto the main road. Um, and we're providing access to a, a potential future development in the south if it is to ever, uh, come forward. Uh, we have reviewed a letter provided by Greenman Peterson. Uh, a couple of the items in there, while the overall combined traffic study shows that this project, combined with the other projects in the area, will not have any, um, significant or degradation of the level of service, uh, within the area. Um, they were concerned with the amount of curb cuts we are proposing on Rec Road. Um, that is somewhat contrary to what we, we heard in our previous meeting. The, uh, uh, planning board in our December meeting looked very favorable upon this layout in comparison to some other alternatives. Um, so that, that is, uh, an element we will have to get worked out, uh, with this board, with Greenman Peterson, uh, the highway superintendent certainly, um, uh, preferred th- this alternative and not having a bunch of driveways coming out onto, uh, Lenox Road. You know, with that, I can certainly, um, try and, and answer any of the questions the board may have. Uh, we are looking to, um, initiate the, uh, coordinated review of this project, if that is what this, uh, board deems appropriate. We are, we do believe we are an unlisted action. Um, so we would like to do that, and we'd like to get set up for a public hearing as soon as possible to continue review of this project. Thank you.
Uh, the one question I have, Joe, from an administrative point of view is, I'm not sure that we ever received an allocation for escrow, um, for the payment of, um, the stormwater review.
Okay, I guess, uh, get us what that, uh, that would be, and we will certainly.
It's a, it, it, it's a 2,500 dollar amount, and as soon as we receive the money, uh, we set up the account, and then we send the, uh, the, uh, stormwater plan out for review to the engineer.
Okay, we will make sure that gets to the town as soon as possible.
Excellent. Now, we'll, we'll start the review right away.
Okay. Now, you declared this, I think this is an R2 zone, and I kind of agree with you. So you're coming in as a cluster development?
Correct.
Have you done your two divisions, your arithmetic, to demonstrate the number of lots that would fall in the acceptable in that scenario?
Yes, the, um, the site statistics on the cover sheet of the drawings have the density computations, uh, and show that we have an allowable density of 23, uh, single-family lots on the 12.74 acres.
Oops, I just like to disregard the pages, I guess. Or any further questions?
I guess this is.
Are we gonna have a dead-end water line and this street light shaver for records?
There is a, um, meeting scheduled next week to address the water connection into the park.
Okay.
So that we can have a, have a continuous look.
Okay. And, and then also on your, on your site details, you, you also have a two-inch copper water service that you're gonna be running into all these houses?
No. Again, uh, similar to the previous project, that is going to be either a three-quarter inch or one-inch service lateral. We'll get that.
So that'll be correct. Okay. And then, um, has there been thought about putting sewer in here, municipal sewer?
Well, um, right now, this, this property is a good 2, 3,000 feet away from any sewer lines. Um, certainly, if it was extended to the doorstep and the sewer was at an appropriate fee, it would be something we would consider. Um, however, being so far away from our property, uh, the only possible option we have is septic systems.
At this time, but if, if it was brought closer to you, you, you would consider it, correct?
If it is, if it's brought closer to us and the fees for the, um, we'll say the taxes are brought down into a, uh, an appropriate level, we would consider it. Um, certainly, the other item is the, the timing associated with that. This subdivision could certainly be under construction this fall. Uh, making sure that we have the, the, the availability of sewer with, that coincides with the timing of construction would be very critical as well.
Okay, okay. All right. Yeah, that's, that's fair enough. I, uh, I just, I just think again, you know, we're, we're putting in a lot of homes, and I'm, I'm big on the sewer thing. I think it should be all, all hooked up to the sewer. So, um, if it's available, we can, we can talk about it as we go along. But thank you for your time.
Or any further questions?
Uh, this is Ann Purdue. Um, relative to the storm management areas, who's responsible for those?
The stormwater management areas will be maintained by the homeowners association.
And how much, how much acreage here is gonna be restricted to no further development?
There, there is. We are dedicating a, uh, small area of land to the town for an entrance to the park. Uh, that is located here. Uh, I don't have the exact number, but all the land that's outside of the lots in this dashed area is all gonna be deed-restricted. I can certainly provide a, an exact number, uh, in the following meeting.
Yeah, Joe, can you do that calculation and provide it?
Certainly.
Joe, I have one other question. What are you gonna do with that compost pile that's there?
It's gonna make some beautiful topsoil for all our homes.
Are you just gonna spread it out, or?
Um, we're gonna have to probably relocate some of it off-site. Um, um, it's not gonna be suitable for fill underneath the roads, underneath the houses, underneath the septic homes. Um, we'll use as much as we can on-site. Some of it's gonna have to be trucked off.
Are there, are there any concerns? I think we need to get a hold of, uh, fire on this because that thing is probably hotter than hot inside. Once, once we start taking it apart, maybe we should notify fire before we do that?
No. Hey, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, i- if that is what the town wants, we can certainly do that. I, I don't necessarily, that, that, that pile's been there for quite a few years. I'm sure it's fairly decomposed at this point in time. If there was a fire hazard, it probably already is past that point. Um, but if, 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 if it is a, if it is a safety concern or there is an issue, certainly the fire department will be contacted.
Do you think it is, or do you know that it is?
Joe, can I talk? This is Johnny Simone.
Yes, Johnny, go ahead.
Uh, gentlemen, Freddie, my excavator was over there, but we were digging, uh, deep holes for perk tests and engineering. He actually broke up the pile a little bit, and there was no heat or anything coming out of the pile. We just wanted to separate it to see what we have. Some is topsoil, some is natural waste, like we said, you know, leaves, debris, wood chips that we'll be hauling off the site. So there is no concern of that.
How far did he go into it, do you know?
All, all the way. He pretty much went down 10, 10 feet, almost down to ground level, because he was trying to see what was topsoil and what was, had to be hauled off the site. To try to start separating it, is that a something we want to start getting in the process to get ready before instruction?
The further you get in. What we have in the middle comes from the time, that's all.
The further you get in, the further you, the further you get into that pile, the further you're gonna get away from oxygen, which is gonna lower the heat anyways. So it shouldn't be a huge issue on the interior temps. This is, this is John Arnold. I have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned something about negotiating with the town, something about a park access. Was that in the northeast corner?
Um, I don't know that we are talking about any park access. The meeting we're having, um, in, in a couple of weeks is dealing with, uh, uh, waterline extensions, road improvements, street trees, street lighting, uh, things. water line extensions, road improvements, street trees, street lighting, things of that nature.
Okay, the reason I bring this up is this was originally brought to us with an HOA. There were lands in the back edge behind all the lots that were considered part of an HOA. You've changed that now and made it deed restricted for development in the back, which is, which handles the idea of maintaining some semblance of open space, but it's not exactly open space, right? I mean, this isn't public or even for the people of the development to use. It's people own this and their homeowners are covering their acreage all the way to the boundaries, correct?
That is correct. It's deed restricted in that it will never be cleared of trees or further cleared of trees. But it is privately open, privately owned deed restricted open space.
But there is some of, but there is some of this that's homeowner association, correct or no?
There is no homeowners association land proposed.
So we have, we have a cluster development with no no actual open space provided?
There's no HOA open space. There certainly is open space.
Okay, so I must be missing the point. So when you're saying open space, you're just saying that there's nothing to be developed in there. You're not saying that it's accessible open space. It's just undeveloped areas.
It is undeveloped open space, correct?
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to hash this out and figure this out. I've been trying with with your development and with the one next door to gain an access for walking from these developments to the park. To try and keep kids from being out on Route 32 or Bluebird Road in order to get to the park entrance. Okay, the development north of you has no direct access to the park. There's no direct action to the park boundaries. Okay, so when you presented this earlier, there was an HOA and I had suggested at that time it'd be nice to have X across the corner of what's now Lot 17 to provide access for not only this development, but also for that other development to get to the park. At this point, it looks like there's no way to do that now because I don't imagine that Lot 17 wants to take on the responsibility and their homeowner's policy to cover that liability in that corner. Is that a pretty good presumption on my part?
So um, I guess I just want to reflect a little differently. In December, and I'm looking at the plans from December right now, and I can bring them up on the screen. Does that show up on your screens?
Yep.
In December, when we presented it, this was presented as privately owned deed restricted open space. There was never any HOA lands post at the development or as part of the element in December. And we remain consistent with that in currently.
The print, the print you bring up, Joe, shows like in Lot 17 shows the line stopping right there.
So if you, let's zoom in on it a little bit. It's here is the lot line for Lot 21. This line here is nearly identical to what we're showing today over here. That is the limits of the deed restricted open space. We've always proposed this to be privately owned land. It was never proposed to be HOA lands.
All right, because I'm a big proponent of what John, what John brought up. Yeah, we've been pushing hard with, with you guys on the upper one to provide access through theirs to this one to get into the park. So, you know, a small revision to Lot 17, that could be possible across that corner.
So are, one of our biggest concerns about providing trail access through that area is we're now introducing at least 84 residential lots access through the rear yard of Lots 17 and Lots 16. One of the biggest complaints, not only from this builder, but all the builders I work with in, in the, in the area and the region is having people walking through essentially your backyard creates a security risk when your children are out in their backyard playing and doing what kids do in the backyard. If we start introducing and bringing a bunch of, you know, 84 homes, that could be, you know, 160, 320 people that could come through that trail system at any time. So it is a security risk and we're not comfortable providing trail access immediately behind our lots. We think would significantly devalue those lots.
Okay, so just if you don't mind my interrupting for just a minute. A solution to 17, Lot 17 homeowner not having to cover the liability of that would be maybe that a portion of that land wide enough for a trail could be deeded over to the town park to provide access to both developments. With that in mind, I get your idea of them not wanting people walking behind them. But it's important note that Lot 16 to Lot 23 already had the park in their backyard.
Right.
There's gonna be people walking back there anyways, right?
Yeah, so we're already taking that into consideration in our, in our pro forma for the project and that those lots are already gonna be devalued and now we're gonna be devaluing another lot.
No, you aren't because lots that, no, excuse me, sir. Let me, let me just clear this up. You won't be devaluing that lot any further because that one also is already bordering on the park.
We'll be devaluing it because now we're introducing a trail that is promoting people to walk through that. Behind 16 and 17 currently, it is just a wooded area. Yes, people can walk through there, but there is not a trail that would promote people walking.
I think, I think, John, you just deed it to the town and put some fences up. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea and there are ways to mitigate the downsides.
And it may never get used. I mean, you don't know, but the idea is to try and, I mean, if, if you're okay with the kids from the development that you're proposing going out on Rec Park Road to get to the park, that's fine. Okay, I, I'm just trying to find a way that we can provide safe access to the park. I'm not even sure that the park is okay with putting an entrance there. I haven't even proposed it to them. I've just been trying to put the pieces together so it could be possible.
It's, it's something we, we will consider. I know we are meeting with the, with the town next week. That, that conversation is gonna be trying to determine how much additional infrastructure and upgrades that this site can provide to the town. Certainly, one of the things that has come up in the past is that we have a unique parcel, an asset having direct access from the main, the main main boulevard into the park. And that, that, that's something that no other community in the, in the area has. You know, providing that additional access certainly, I, I'd say provides additional assets to other communities which may hinder this, this community and it may not make it as valuable and have enough revenue in order to be able to help the town and give them some of the elements that they're asking for with the additional infrastructure. So we'll consider it as something we'll bring up with our meeting with the town next week.
Go ahead, go ahead again.
I'm sorry, I, I just had a couple more. This is the first time I've seen a development where they propose using the cul-de-sacs in the inside of loop roads as stormwater management areas. Is that something that, that our engineers should look into? I've never seen this before.
So we did have a meeting with Paul Joseph last week. Certainly, the stormwater management area that's in the center of the cul-de-sac. We are going to remove and we're looking at different alternatives for that right now. The other areas are simply shallow grass depressions. They are going to look as if they are mowed grass and, and they will be usable most times of the year for residents of the community to go out. So there's gonna be an easement over the, the, the center of those islands and eyebrows that the HOA will maintain that area. And there'll, and there'll be a whole harmless clauses set up with the town for the use of those areas. I've done this in a few other communities within Saratoga County and it actually works out quite well.
So I guess that answers my next question. You're, you're calling them eyebrows. The things that are listed as stormwater management that look like ditches, those aren't ditches and those are actual micro pools for stormwater management. Is that the idea?
So if we're looking at this area here in this area here, that is.
I would, no, I was talking about along the roads.
Over here.
Yes, and along the park road itself, along Lenox Boulevard.
Right, and that, that's something we are working with the town on right now. We're looking at alternative designs, possibly bringing that to the south side of the road and creating just a standard stormwater management area that everyone's accustomed to.
Okay, well, before you do that, is it, are these two separate developments?
Yes.
Okay, so once again, we're talking about handling stormwater for one development on another person or another parcel.
Right.
Okay. I.
Just to answer your question about the engineer review, John, like I said, we haven't started that yet. They haven't paid the fee for the review. As soon as that, that's where we'll kind of set up, the review will be started.
Okay. All right.
Now you said you've had discussions with Paul? Highway?
Yes, we were in Paul's office in the highway garage last Thursday, I believe it was.
And he's against stormwater management in the cul-de-sacs?
Just the one cul-de-sac. This one here, he doesn't believe it's enough space. He wants to be able to do some snow maintenance in that area. So we are, we are looking at all our alternatives between Thursday and today. We didn't have time to do an updated map and revise that. But certainly in the following meeting in April, we're gonna have that updated and revised with an appropriate solution.
I guess that's what my concern was, is it seems like all of your stormwater is right where all the snow would be plowed. And I'm saying I don't like it. I think it's a, a nice use of those inner areas. It's just, I'm wondering if this is gonna be an issue if there's a, a heavy snow year and a spring thaw.
Yeah, and certainly that's something we can review with the, the engineer. I know, again, we talked with the, the highway superintendent. He didn't like the small cul-de-sac using that one, but the other two he was okay with.
Joe, has there been any progress on the water district if you're an out of district user or any resolution to that? Because it's conflicting information. The county apparently says you are and our mapping says you are not in the district, so.
I can actually handle that. I, I can actually, I, sorry, if that's okay, I could, I could actually handle that. So I did look into that. I was at the town hall for about three hours today trying to go through all this stuff. And the, the property is not within either Water District Four or Water District One. It borders on both. What you're looking at when, when you folks, the applicant says that it's, the county says it's in a district. What you're looking at are the assessment records. For some reason, the assessment record says you're in a district, but you're not technically in a district in the town and the map governs. So what you would have to do is just connect to either Water District One or Water District Four. And, and then you would have to be an out of district user. You can still connect to it because you're adjacent to both. So you can still get municipal water if we have the capacity. And I think that's something we can talk about when we have our meeting in the next couple of weeks. But just to make everybody clear, that's where things stand with the water district. The other thing I wanted to, Joe, and maybe I, I don't understand. You have said there is no HOA and then you say there is an HOA for stormwater. But then you say there's not an HOA and then there is an HOA. So is there or is there not an HOA for the stormwater? Like who is going to take that over?
Yeah, just to clarify that, there is going to be an HOA that will be responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater management area that are located on town land. There's not going to be any HOA owned lands.
Okay, all right. I, I think the board was a little confused and I thought I heard some of the board muttering about that, so I wanted to verify that.
Carla, you said they're not in the water district?
They are not in any water district. They are adjacent on either side. The, the park side is Water District Four and the, you know, Gansmore Road side, that is Water District One, one of the extensions of Water District One.
So, so they have to do a district extension?
They would have to do a district extension. No, 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 they would not have to do a district extension. They could do an out of district user, but they could, they could have an out of district agreement.
So they could do a contract with the town?
They could, yep, yep.
Okay.
And that's something we're gonna talk about because there may be capacity concerns that we just have to look into. But that, that's something we're gonna talk about, you know, when we meet, but in the next week or two, I think.
Okay, thank you. Joe, can we just go back to that compost pile for one second, please?
Sure.
Looking at it from a public safety issue, once we start taking that thing apart, the oxygen fog in there, we, we could have some problems. So, so once you start taking it apart, and I know Freddie's there, I haven't known Freddie very well, he's an excellent contractor. Could you just notify the county that, that they're going to take that thing apart and maybe have fire come over and do some random inspections? But to talk to them before we get ourselves into a bind over there, there's, there's a school, there's, there's a school there and there's, there's quite a few residential homes. And I hate to see that thing get going and get a lot of smoke and, and create some things in the public. So I think, I think this is, make a note for Freddie to do a simple phone call to the county and let them know what's going on up here. Just a, it's just a courtesy thing and a, and a public safety thing. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, notifying the, the county or the fire district?
Fire district.
You can notify the county and they, they, they could, they could get ahold of the fire chief and, and then the department could go from there. It's, again, you know, with the school and everything being there, I hate to see we get a good smoky thing going there and get everybody in trouble.
I'll, I'll say, we, 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 we will, we will agree to notify the appropriate entities at the time and we'll, we'll make sure.
And this is John Arnold. Jim and Carla, the two of you can fight for, for ownership of this. But could somebody check with the town to see if the town would even be interested or willing to put an entry to the park there at that corner? I just realized, I mean, I just realized I've been bugging both developers about this and I don't even know if the park wants it. They may not want access in that corner. So I'm looking, I'm looking at the drawing right now and it looks like a wooded area with some baseball fields and things like that.
Yeah, this is Meredith. I was, I was thinking, I know it's in the village, but off of Tamrac, which was Michael's group off of Woodcrest, they have a connection to the bike way and all that trail system. And it's quite nice. Sure, the village must own it. I'm looking at the mapping. But it's just a gravel, crushed gravel path that cuts off Tamrac, goes into the bike system. My kids and I use it quite a bit. It looks like the neighbor has a fence. The house is listed at 433 on Zillow, so I think it's doing pretty well. So I think if, if, you know, if the conversations with the town go forward, maybe we use that as, you know, see how the village worked it out in that development.
Because I mean, that Lot 17 is way back to that back corner. I mean, it's well away from the house. It's a very large lot. So there's certainly, if the, if a portion of it was used for a trail through there, it could be shielded, it could be fenced, whatever. It wouldn't be, you know, too obstructive, but to the same degree, I hate to put a whole lot of pressure on the developers, either one of them anymore. Unless the town says, yeah, we wouldn't mind having an entrance there. It may not be anything anybody even wants at the park. I don't know. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to spitball ways to make sure that if these houses end up with a bunch of kids in and they aren't riding their bikes on Route 9 and 32, if we can help it. Or not Route 9, excuse me, 32 and Bluebird Road, if we can help it. If we can't, then we can't, you know, that's, is what it is.
Mr. Martin, has this been sent to our engineers?
No.
Not yet?
No, we're still waiting for the escrow funds.
And I see a lot of concerns, you know, lying. Maybe I'm an idiot, I don't know. But I see proliferation of stormwater areas that are gonna be filled. And they're going to get relocated, possibly. I think we need comments from our engineer consultant to further with this. If you look at my front yard, snowplows.
Well, the thing is, we don't have an up-to-date stormwater plan from the applicants. This was just known last week that they're changing their approach. So I don't know where you're at with your redesign, Joe, but, you know, we're going to need a revised clip and all that that reflects whatever the plan is for stormwater.
Yeah, and we're certainly aware of that. Again, they're just, between when we found out that this was an issue with the town at the meeting on Thursday and today, there was not time to do any of that work. Certainly, that'll be submitted for the next meeting, and certainly that's what we ask the town engineer reviews.
Did our engineer review this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's right.
Another, just, just another question quick. You have in the back of almost every lot here, I think it is every lot, a dashed oval-shaped feature. What is that?
So that, that is a shallow grass depression that would be managing any of the runoff that would come off the rear roofs of the houses. It basically just temporarily attenuates that stormwater and slows down the flow of stormwater heading offsite.
So that's also part of the stormwater management?
Correct. That's part of the stormwater management system, and everything we're doing here is to kind of eliminate
Is that also HOA?
No, those are individual homeowner responsibilities.
So what, what, I guess, is that going to be in the deed that these, those particular areas cannot be touched?
Yeah, they, they'll be, it'll be in, I think in the deed, there'll be restrictions associated with them, yes.
Because, I mean, they're not in the do-not-touch area of the lots that you've designated. They're inside the lot areas, that dotted line, that's the untouched area. That's why I was asking is so basically, a good portion of the stormwater for this project is being managed by individual homeowners?
I would not say a good portion. It's a relatively minor portion. It's just the rear roofs of the houses. All of the front roofs and the driveways and the roads are all being managed in larger pods, areas, larger areas.
Okay.
If that is to, the way it actually ends up, then that will, each one will be need to be annotated on the plans. The town cannot enforce a deed restriction or anything like that. The only thing the town can enforce and follow is if it's part of the improved subdivision map. So if you're going to do that, it has to be on here.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent following that comment, but we do have them shown, and we will be calling them out as a restricted area on the approved subdivision plans.
So how do they actually function, Joe? They're, they're a sloped depression in the, in the yard?
It's a shallow grass depression, if you will, a six-inch-deep area that the roof runoff comes off the roof, hits the ground, runs across the ground, and is ultimately collected in these small depressions. And then it infiltrates into the ground.
So what if property owner number two comes along? He's mowing his grass one day and says, huh, I got this, I got this depression in my backyard I don't like. And he goes down the loaves and he gets seven bags of topsoil and fills that in, because he doesn't like walking down in that hole every time he mows his yard. What's going to happen then?
So he would be illegally filling that in a deed-restricted area, and it could be enforceable that he has to remove it.
Enforceable by who? Not by the town?
I thought you were just saying that anything that's represented on the subdivision plan can be enforced by the town.
If you, if you so annotate that on the plan, yes. Okay, if you like it or not.
I guess, from my standpoint, Joe, I would encourage if there's an alternative method, that you investigate that.
Yeah, certainly, we can look at it. Again, it's, it's, if we think about it logically, the water coming off the roof is probably never even going to make it to those depressions, because it'll infiltrate through the ground. However, the, the way in which the manual reads and the way we have to design this to show it in our calculations, there needs to be some level of attenuation off the rear of those roofs. And the other option is opening up a swale that drains behind all of the properties and collects and is discharged, which I think is more intrusive than these small little depressions in each yard.
So what if you were to move those depressions into the area that's already annotated for not being touched?
Well, the, the purpose of that open space area is to have it as open space. The deed restrictions associated with that open space is no infrastructure, nothing that needs to be maintained.
Okay.
We would need annual maintenance.
Okay.
Board, any further questions? Okay. We've heard in the beginning that the applicant has scheduled a public hearing, that of course is up to the board. My take is there's nowhere near ready.
Yeah.
Question can be answered, and information needs to be gathered. On one member of seven, it's up to the board.
The other thing I would just suggest to staff is we have a relatively full public hearing slate, given the content of the applications on April nineteenth, all right? We have two scheduled, and it's going to be for Arrowhead and the PUD.
And we, at this point, we, this hasn't even gone to our engineer to look at it, and we're not sure that it's going to go. There actually have come out or surfaced this evening, changes that have to be made before it even goes to our engineer. As far as what came out of talks with DPW and from this meeting this evening. I mean, do we think they're standing?
No, I think, I think we do need to come back with the updated stormwater plans and get some engineering comments. I guess I would just ask that this certainly, if we could start the process, if there is going to be a coordinated review, that we can start that process to help start expediting this.
That we certainly can do. Board, what is your pleasure? Type one, type two, unlisted?
We need to see about the water dealers. If they're going to even give them water? Because if they don't give them water, then it could be something totally different. I think we need to wait.
I guess we don't have
Without municipal water, right? Without municipal water, this could change everything. They're not in the district. We don't know if they're going to be allowed in the district. They're not going to give them water.
But as far as Seekers concerned, is this type one, type two, or unlisted?
I would think it's unlisted.
Do I have a motion of some sort? Before the advocate falls asleep?
Unless there's something, unless there's something I'm missing here, I'll make a motion that we, we asked, we listed as lead agency on Seeker, unless this is an unlisted action.
Motion's been made to declare Jacobi Farms North as an unlisted action as far as Seeker is concerned. To the motion, do I have a second?
This is Meredith. I'll make a second.
Motion's been made seconded to declare a unlisted action for Jacobi Farms North as far as Seeker's concerned. Any further discussion?
So you're taking lead agency status and declaring it, yes?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries? Board, do you want to put yourself into the position of being a lead agency for this review?
Thank you.
And a follow-up motion?
Sorry, I thought I did that with the last motion.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we did too.
I think I listed
It was a motion for both declaring unlisted and to set lead agency. It was a dual motion.
Yes, I did. And that one's already gone through.
Okay. My error. I wish I had my big mouth.
No, no, please don't beat me up.
I'm going to do the same sex, D E C, D O A, F O T, school, county, and the A G.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything for our board, because I can mess up. If not, turn around, spare play. Advocate, do you have any questions of us?
No, I, I, I think I'm all set on this application.
I do have one question, if I can.
Yeah.
This is Johnny Simone. Jim, we bring a check to the town on Monroe tomorrow for $2,500. Is that correct?
Yeah, yep, make it payable to the town, and we'll establish the escrow account and get the review on the engineer started.
I do apologize, this is the first time we heard of it, so I will get that to the town tomorrow.
If I may, I'd just like to remind Jim, I'd like somebody to ask the town if they would even entertain the idea of having access to the park from that back corner. I have it down in my notes. Okay, just because there's no sense, if they don't want it, there's no sense going any further, pushing any more on it, okay? So.
Yep.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, if that would be a thing, I have to apologize to you if I mispronounced the name, it's not intentional. Is that God or something?
Giacchino, Giacchino. Hold on, I got to catch up with you.
Hey, Jim, this is Joe Danville. Are you there?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, are we going to be discussing the other application, the Vintagel application at the end of the meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'll stay around.
So you have the honor and privilege of hanging around to the end.
Wonderful. I'll try and stay awake.
That's a charm. We have one of the next ones.
Uh, let me see here. Is Bill on? Bill Rourke? Bill, are you there? Bill?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can. Bill, you're a technological wizard.
I'm telling you, it's terrible.
And it works better.
Okay. Yes, we have, the agent is on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, tell us a story.
Okay, we're doing the Robin, Ro, Giacchino subdivision. They've, I believe it's the last lot they're going to develop. There's two other houses that have been approved. This is lot number two. It's just slightly up, it's 42,000 square feet, just under an acre. They're proposing, it has 155 feet of road frontage directly onto the road. It's being cut out of a 12-acre parcel. I don't believe, I, I shouldn't say this, but I don't believe they're going to be developing any more lots. I'm not sure of that. But this is just a one-lot subdivision.
And just if the board recalls, I think this was last on in maybe November, and there were some problems with the, the mapping that had since been corrected. But the reason why this is before you was a two-lot subdivision is they already did, they're one administrative, two-lot. And now, any other subdivision has to come before the board in a seven-year period, so that's why this is here. And I think this is a compliant situation now. And lot one does have two points of frontage, if you know, that's 20 feet, and then 40.13 feet on Fort Edward Road, with one existing house on it, so that's lot one. And then this lot two would be a new compliant lot with a proposed residence on it. So that's why this is here, and it was looked at once, and we had to get some clarifications done on the mapping, and I think that now is in place, so this is back.
Yes.
Board, questions? What's your take, Board?
I don't, I don't have a lot of questions. That's pretty straightforward.
I think so, yes.
Other than the seven-year, you know, the seven-year thing, this would have been administrative.
Correct.
It still does require a public hearing. We have to go through that.
This is Anna. Just a quick question. I guess the balance, this lot one, it's access between the Ticchio, I may not be pronouncing that incorrectly, lot and the lot of the Fowlers?
Yeah, if you look closely, there's a 40.13-foot dimension there.
Yeah, yeah.
Right into the name. And then as a technical matter, it does have another area of frontage of 20 feet on Fort Edward Road.
See that, okay. So what is, so what is the plan for the balance of the land? I mean, right now you have none?
No, it has a house on.
Um, yeah, but it's still quite a bit of acreage.
Well, there's a wetland on the back part of it, and if you notice the buffer line?
I see it.
It's pretty consumed by that.
I doubt if they're going to be developing that.
Okay.
Now, does lot one also come down in the north side of lot two? Is that what that data lines indicate?
Let's bring it up here. Yes, and this is the lot. Trails like this. And then it's going down here, and it's like that, and I think they're taking this.
Jump out.
Yes, it's 155 feet of frontage for lot two. That was part of the problem.
Board, questions, comments, concerns?
I did notice a, this is Meredith, on the Seeker form, number 14, typical habitat types that occur on, they checked urban. That's incorrect.
Yeah, Bill, you should correct that, I have response of 14.
Yep, probably, it's, would be
You certainly have wetland, so that's one item. You certainly have wetland, so that's one item.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I said you certainly have wetland.
Yes, yes, I do, yep.
And then I think it's more appropriately termed suburban than urban.
Alright, and probably forested too.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, that should be corrected.
Okay, board, what else do you want to do?
Hey Bill, this is John Arnold.
Yep.
Um, you've been out on this site, it was questioned earlier whether lot one could be further subdivided. Um, that area down in the south edge of it, that's accessed by that 40-foot or whatever strip from Fort Edward Road.
Right.
Is that, is that also wet there, or is that, is there an area there enough that that could be, um, used for another lot? I won't hold you to it, I'm just curious, I don't have feet on the ground there, so I don't-
I have no indication that, that, that they're going to develop anymore. Um, I guess it could be.
Okay.
It's, um, it's in the upland inclusion area.
Okay.
It could be, I wouldn't suggest it.
Right. Okay. I was just curious.
They have not told me.
So going back to the lot that, lot number two that we're looking at subdividing, is there a reason why it's proposed to have that house that far from the road, is there some type of a, a land?
Well, um, there's, see that's, that dry ditch across the front of the property?
Right, right.
18-inch pipe in there, it's, it's nicer in the back, and-
Okay.
They're all built in the back, I think it's a lot nicer.
Okay. So it's, it's a choice, it isn't a requirement, it isn't-
Correct, correct.
Board, is there a question?
Nope. So we're looking at a potential public hearing on this, this is a, but this doesn't fall under our normal subdivision, um, site plan requirements, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm noting that we don't have any, um, any terrain lines or anything like that on it. We have, we have, uh, landmark designations and wetland designations, but we don't have topo lines or anything like that, but we don't need that for this smaller thing, right?
We typically do not for two lots.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, okay.
Okay, board. Would you seek your hat out? Type one, type two, unlisted, would you please?
Type two, isn't it, Peter?
I would say, well, my personal opinion is yes, but that doesn't mean you want to agree with me. If we have an opinion, we can take it as a form of motion.
I, I think the subdivision, this is Ann, I think the subdivision action itself is, is maybe, um, an unlisted. Type two, I think it's the construction or expansion of, of a residence as opposed to the subdivision, but, you know, Carla may have a different view.
No, we can, we can do it as an unlisted.
Well, the whole thing is in here before us, so that's however many acres. They are looking at creating one. But this one lot-
That's true.
Is an action of the total area. Unless it has been in here as a subdivision previously, I don't believe this has.
Then we should probably change number 12 on our, um, subdivision application that lists this as the last of a four-lot residential subdivision. I don't know if we can word that differently, because this is a two-lot subdivision then that's in front of us, not the last of a four-lot residential subdivision.
It has to be considered, if two, what they're calling down two, is part of the total parcel, then we have two lots of division, yes.
Yeah, so that should be changed.
I'm sorry, would you change, John?
Well, on number 12 of the, um,
Seeker?
Subdivision application, number 12, it says the proposed development plan, briefly describe it, and it says last of a four-lot subdivision.
Sorry about that, I was looking at the seeker application, that doesn't fit.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Now I do.
So now we can go back to your type one definition again. Sorry.
That's okay. What are we going to declare this? What's your question? Is it an unlisted?
I would be a two subdivision, would not-
Give me one second.
I, I don't see subdivision listed as a type two, so I'm assuming it's an unlisted action. This is Ann.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure. If I can help, this should be listed as an unlisted action.
Thank you, Carla. I, I make a motion that we determine this as an unlisted action.
Motion has been made to declare a two-lot subdivision, and you apologize, Regina?
Yacino.
I suppose. As a, an unlisted action to the motion, do I have a second?
I can second that.
Was that John?
Yeah.
Yes, it was, I'm sorry.
That's okay, motion been made seconded to declare this as a, an unlisted action. All those bouncing to controversial, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Abstentions? Do you like it? Motion's been made seconded, and I know our discussion. And our vote has made this unanimous. What else would you like to do, board?
Do we have everything we need to do a public hearing?
Well, that is a question that I would ask the board members, if you feel we have enough information.
Meredith, I feel like we do.
I think we do too.
Pretty straightforward.
I will make a motion to-
I've made a motion to set it. I'll second. Mike's second.
I'm saying to prepare a public hearing, uh, for when?
April 19th, isn't it? We're gonna have three that night, but-
Yeah, this shouldn't be too bad, though, I think we can do this.
Yeah, I think we can put this one in with those.
Motion been made for a public hearing for April 19th, and I will go on on Wednesday 7:15. To the motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? And that, I don't think is controversial, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carriers?
Bill, are you still there?
Yes, yes.
Don't forget to put your sign up 10 days prior.
Um, this being an unlisted action, we're still going for preliminary and final approval, correct?
You may be able to, if you request that, the, after the motion of women are hearing, you may?
Yes, I'd like to do that, and possibly the final also, as for the same-
You can do that, you always make a request.
Okay. It'll depend on how contro-
What was that?
Uh, what I was gonna say is that'll depend on how controversial it turns out at the public hearing, right?
Right.
Turn around, square play, do you have any further questions of us?
Nothing, no, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Board, did I understand that, uh, there was a demand for a request from Mr. Vittengale?
Yeah, it might be good to do that before you get into the solar law, so they don't have to hang around. Let me see if I can, Joe, are you still there?
You want to just leave him?
I'm here.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Um, can I share my screen?
Please.
Uh, yeah, let me, um, where'd you go here? Let me get, let me get back to you, hold on a second. There you go, should we be able to do it now?
Okay. Um, so we had previously got final approval, I think in January, for a two-lot subdivision, very similar to what we see here, lot one was the existing auto dealership. The division line came up through here. Lot two was on this side, and we had an easement for future access. Um, since that time, the, uh, the owner, Mr. Vittengale, has, um, gotten an offer on the land for a 200 by 333-foot lot, they don't need all of lot number two. Um, so what we're looking to do is still keep it at a two-lot subdivision. Lot two would be highlighted in orange. Blue is the access easement, and then the remaining lands would be lot one. Um, so just, it's a minor change in that lot one is now on both sides of the easement, uh, and lot two has, has gotten smaller.
More questions?
Should we ever take that building down before we did anything? Yeah, so it's, it's still would be a non-compliant building, the old car wash.
So I was gonna ask, it's still there, right?
Yeah, it's still there, as far as I know.
Yeah, we, we haven't ripped it down yet.
Well, that's the not wanted one thing. Well, the condition of the approval was that that had to come down before the classus got final signature.
Correct.
And I would still recommend that to be the case.
We would agree to that.
The thing I think is important to do here is, until such time that road is built, you really gotta put the, the blue lines, the roadway, out of your mind. That doesn't exist yet.
Right.
This is still just a simply a two-lot subdivision with an easement going through for now.
So the access will still be all remaining?
Hopefully.
Well, I mean, if it's only an easement, if there's not a road there, then we can't have enough access without the road running, correct?
Right. Without the reservation boards, and he's doing this, so.
Cameron?
I, I just thought this was a, a change that was significant enough to bring it back to the board, so you're aware and approve the amendment rather than doing administrative.
Uh, this is Ann, how much acreage is, um, on that other side of the easement, the, the property that used to be all of lot two?
Um, so lot two was 3.2 acres, and lot one was 2.8 acres. Um, I don't have the revised areas on here, but you're probably, um, 300 by 200 is probably gonna be more like 1.6 acres. So you probably have about 1.6 added to the 2.8. So you're probably gonna have like 4.4 as lot one, and, um, about 1.6 on lot two.
Well, what portion of that lot one is on the other side of the access road?
About 1.6 acres.
You're talking about the lot in the back that's being proposed at this moment, that, that could be there, that would be 1.6.
Right, but it's, it's really a, um, 4.4 acre lot.
No, I understand that, yeah.
But if you were just going with this thinking that in the event the road is built, that would be a compliant lot.
Yes.
It'd be a third lot.
Yeah, it's time the road gets built, there might be a further subdivision.
Is there any reason we don't call it a, a lot three now?
Because it'd be, it would be landlocked and a non-compliant lot.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I got you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in the event this road is ever built, it's still a buildable lot because it has sufficient acreage.
Yeah.
And sufficient frontage on what would be a new public right.
And with all due respect, that was your question, not mine. That was a good question. Okay. So this lot two that's being created then, if, if this other road isn't built, it will be accessing, or having its access weight on to Route 9 itself?
Correct. And it would be up to the user to get a DOT permit for that access.
Yeah, no, oh yeah, yeah, and that would be understandable.
And, and, and just to be aware, anything that occurs on lot one's gonna be in front of this board for site plan review and approval.
Right, of course.
And it'd be through that process, it's likely that the, uh, the access permit is dealt with.
Yep.
Anything that's done on lot two?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
How far does the, um, existing drive go presently between the two lots?
Um, I think we're pavement up to about this point here.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that site plan even for lot two, if that was the first thing to come in, you'd wanna start planning for the eventuality of that access road, so the drive would come through that area where the access road is shown.
Right. Hey Jim? It-
Yeah.
How would that look, would they have to get an easement from lot one then to use that? Until the road is built?
Yes.
Yep.
Now, you know, you're, you're going through the same thing right now with that, um, B K M proposal there on, on Old Saratoga Road.
Of course, yeah. Yep.
It's the same type of thing.
Yep, okay.
Board, any further questions?
I, I think a, a simple amendment, or a simple resolution approving the amendment as shown would be sufficient.
Would you please, board?
So that amendment would only change the lot line- So that amendment would only change the lot line adjustment, right? I mean, basically, instead of the lot line following that easement, it would be split now to the new lot two. Uh, that wouldn't change any of the other, any of the other contingencies or any of the other restrictions from the previous subdivision, uh, subdivision approval, all right, including the ones that say that, that we don't sign my laws until that building's removed?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And then if you wanna put in your approving amendment, something to add effect, that would be fine.
I don't know if it's necessary, if it doesn't, if it's already on the original site plan and it hasn't changed because of that, but if you wanna be kind of redundant, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Much pleasure, Board.
I can make a motion to make a lot line adjustment from the previously approved, um, site plan to the new lot two designated, um, plan that we have in front of us here.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve the lot line adjustment, and I'm going to do a little bit of interceding here. Did we see this headed as Auto World or is Mr. Vittengale?
Auto World, referred to as Auto World's, uh, three lot subdivision or two lot subdivision.
Well, lot line adjustment to Auto World subdivision, to the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, would you call the role, please?
Tricia, sir.
I will try, I am here, I'm here, yes, I just need to-
I just wanted to make sure you were unmuted.
I can't see who that is, though, in the room. Is that Mr. Seabolt?
That's correct.
And is he voting tonight?
I don't believe he is.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, let's see, what order I wanna do this in? Ms. Purdue?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Hi. I have a section affirmative, does that recommend?
Yeah, Adam does vote, 'cause, uh, Gary's not here.
Right.
Yes, all right, Mr. Seabolt?
All right.
That was an aye.
Got it.
So, I have a second.
Can't count, that's six.
Motion carries.
My shoes are, I can say one, two, four, six.
That's our hearing for the evening.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Board, for the consideration.
Can I go?
Yep, can I go?
Next item on my hand is the discussion on the draft solar law. Who wants to kick it off?
Carla, did you wanna do anything to introduce this, or?
I can, if you want me to, um, I, okay.
You've looked at this more recently than I have, so.
I've looked at this way too much, is what you're saying, uh, over the past six months. What, what you have before you is the draft solar law that was worked on quite extensively by the town board over a number of meetings and workshops. Um, they went through line by line, um, working with the model law, they had some pretty intense discussions. What you have before you is what they wanted to send to the two boards and to NYSERDA to review, um, to get further comments and then have a full, a fully vetted draft to go out to the public to hear the public's concerns. Um, we know the public is very interested in this, um, and we don't wanna diminish the public's input, but we wanted to be able to have a cohesive document, um, to be presented to the public. So, um, document you have in front of you has been vetted through the zoning board last week or two weeks ago, I can't honestly remember when they met. Um, and, um, they have some suggestions. Um, I attended a meeting with NYSERDA and a couple of the town board members, um, oh, a few weeks ago, where NYSERDA and their clean energy citing team went through, uh, with us for, um, over an hour and a half and gave us some suggestions, gave us some thoughts. Obviously, they, you know, they're just, you know, helping us out here. They are in the process of working with Pace University Law School to revamp the, the model law. So this actually was very fortuitous in that the town of Moreau's law is being looked at with NYSERDA. Obviously, NYSERDA cannot tell the town what to do, it's the town board's, um, role in, in acting the law. But, and NYSERDA has been good to work with and their clean energy citing team in particular. So, um, you folks are, I, I don't wanna say the last line of defense at this point, but you're the last folks I'm waiting to hear from with respect to this law. I know that I have received some comments and I've had some back and forths with a few members of the board. So I guess, I don't know, Jim, I don't know how you ran this with the zoning board last week, I was unable to attend that meeting. So perhaps you can go through it the same way you did it with the zoning board, if that seemed to work for you.
Well, what, what we did is we, we, and it's up to the board, obviously, it's your meeting, but, um, that evening, we went through just member by member and got their individual comments. Um, I took some notes, um, and then they also had the option of, uh, they wanted to send along an email with their individual thoughts. That's certainly permissible and I, I just forwarded it on to the town board, I think you all saw that. Uh, so Gary Engel did, did take advantage of that, he had his individual markup that he provided. And then I did the summary points from the, uh, members based upon my notes and what they said. And I also provided them the opportunity to, to supplement that, that further if they wanted to, and I haven't heard anything yet, but, um, so I, I, that seemed to work, but it's up to you guys, however you wanna do it, um, but we went through person by person.
I know, I, my biggest question in, in my experience, if that's okay with anybody, um, and it's, I guess, Carla, um, is there anything in this, I, I didn't see anything, I could not read it, but, but the disposal of these solar panels? Is there anything that we can say that cannot be disposed of in the town of Moreau? I go back to the GE site where things got varied, didn't know about it and that kind of stuff. Not knowing anything was inside these solar panels is, um, in 20 years from now, they need to go someplace, um, if they get broke on site. What is a cleanup detail that could protect the town on this?
I think the way that that would work is through the decommissioning plan. You would have to, um, they would have to put together the decommissioning plan and explain how they would remove all of their documents, all, I'm not documents, I'm sorry, all of their panels. And that is something that the town could require, that they cannot be disposed of in the town, but, um, I, you know, I'll, I don't, that has not come up yet. So I'm taking notes and I'll see if we can incorporate that in.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Carla?
Yes.
Well, Jim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I, I did have an, an exchange with Carla over a couple of things, but I'm gonna wanna make sure we put them into our minutes here, so I'll go through them again anyways. Um, one of them is under the definition of a ground mounted solar array. The very last phrase in that definition is, is for onsite use.
Yeah, that's gonna be changed, John, that, that-
Okay, all right, so I wanted to make sure-
Yep.
Okay, all right, 'cause really, ground mount is about the type of, of, um, structure, not necessarily it's, it's generating use. Um, another thing is, is on, I think in the law, it mentions 40% coverage. Um, that the panels on a, a tier three, um, in the R5 can't be more than 40% of the site coverage. What I'd like to know is, I, I honestly consider that to be a, a pretty large percentage. Myself personally, if this is really about, you know, trying to allow access but not have it be the primary use in the ag zone or in the R5. Um, but I would wonder how you would enforce that? I mean, like, if, if somebody owns 100 acres and they wanna put 40%, which would be 40 of those acres, is there some kind of restriction on the other 60 of what can be done with it?
Well, I think that's, that's gonna be addressed through the application process, 'cause the other thing I understood, Carla, that's 40% of the land after prime farmland is deducted, correct?
Well, that's what's being, right now, the law says that prime farmland cannot be used.
Okay.
So you deduct that first.
I don't know as if that's going to remain, but that is what is being proposed.
And I would, if I, if I may, since that's been brought up, I would like to say that I like the designation of the way that it was listed in the law for protecting that land. I know there's been comments from other people on the zoning board and, and on the town board that it appears sometimes that their biggest concern is whether people are gonna be able to see this from their back window. Um, as a farmer in the town of Moreau, I can tell you right now that there isn't an acre of farmland in the town of Moreau that isn't valuable. That isn't, if it's good farmland, if it's prime farmland, historically good farmland, there is a market for it and there is a use for it right now. So anything we can do to make sure that if these solar panels get put in, they don't get planted on the best farmland in the town, it's a smart move. Um, I know everybody keeps-
What is the definition of prime land?
Well, it does, I was just gonna clarify that. My understanding is that there is a standard that is meant to qualify as prime farmland.
Yes.
And that is a mapable standard.
It is.
It's actually-
Somebody's got it, go ahead.
It's actually, um, in a map already, I mean, we get, we get that information from the, from the county.
So if somebody's got 100 acres and they have 50 of its prime farmland, then that gets mapped and that area is not to have a solar panel. So that person is automatically dealing with that 40% of 50 acres.
And that's mapped in the county right now?
On the state, they have that in their clearinghouse of mapping, the digital mapping, there's a layer that is prime farm.
Okay.
But it's important to note that not all of the prime farmland is mapped, but it can be, okay, so.
So should it, should it be?
Well, I, it can be as you go along. I mean, I'm gonna say this, probably all of the farm, active farmland that's prime farmland is already mapped.
Well, John, and again, in answer to the original question, how's this gonna work? Is if somebody applies to have a solar array on their farm, it's gonna come in for site plan review like anything else and that's gonna be a standard to meet. In the application process, do you have prime farmland? Whether, regardless whether it's from the state mapping that's available, or if that person hasn't done that, they're gonna need to quantify that in order to answer that question.
Now, the-
And once that's mapped-
Right.
Once that's mapped, then you're gonna work outside of that area.
The wording that I saw listed, prime farmland, it also saw, said farmland of historic significance or whatever. I mean, it did a very nice job of, of including everything, so I was good with that. But my question to you then, Jim, is, okay, let's say there's our, our 100 acre farm, 50 of its prime farmland, we have another 50, we can cover 40% with panels, that's 20 acres. Okay, is that other 30 acres now designated as undevelopable because of that, or? I, I guess, I mean, okay.
No, just for the purposes of, purposes of locating a solar array on that site, it would be limited to that 20 acres.
Okay, all right, I wanted to make sure of that. All right, so if somebody wanted to do that and then take the other 30 acres and put houses on it, they could?
Correct.
Okay.
Or, or, yes, it allowed you. Do, do they have to be so far away from the residential area, though?
Well, you would have to, um, in the law itself, just like with any other application that becomes, comes before you, there's going to be setback requirements, there's going to be, um, visual requirements, all of that is in there, and that's why you folks, you know, this is gonna be on you. You know, you, you want, you guys are gonna be the ones that do the, the, um, hard work, because when the applicant comes to you, they're gonna have to meet everything. And you're gonna have to go through this, and so that's why if you think there's something that you want to see in this law that's not there, let us know, because, you know, you're the ones that are making the sausage, so to speak.
Well, if, if we put a residential area, you know, I wouldn't want it real close to a residential area, right? Is there, again, we don't know, do these put, uh, anything? You know, like, if you live too close to an electrical line, they say it's not good for you, and, and I'm not an expert on this. Is, is this something that we don't know, these things, what else?
I, yeah.
And is there future harm down the road to a, a residential area or too close to a school or?
I have not heard of any-
No.
Any health issues being, um, or deriving from proximity to a solar array. I don't, I'm not, I have not heard. Is there any place we could go to get that answer? I would think NYSERDA would know that.
Yeah.
They did not bring that up.
I've, this is Meredith, I've been in wireless telecommunications and now I'm in energy and, no, usually that argument doesn't hold anything. Um, your home microwave puts out a lot more than any of these things.
Right. So, and, and you know, the other thing I would like to bring up is, is we keep, like I said, it was, it was, from what I've read in the paper and read from the minutes of the meetings, there was always a concern that of these things being visible and, and, um, Mike just said the same thing, we, you know, maybe we wanna make sure these can't be cited too close to a housing development. And I almost have to say, if we're gonna call these things community solar arrays, um, I almost wonder that they shouldn't be set near housing developments where they can help offset the electrical use instead of, um, if, we seem to wanna just stuff, throw it out into the farm area, you know, where there's open space and we can just leave it out there and it won't affect a lot of people. Um, I mean, I realize that these things generate, they hook up to the electrical grid and they can go anywhere. So I'm not saying that I think it has to be directly connected to a house, um, I just don't know.
Just let me, there's, just let me correct, uh, clarify a couple of things.
Sure.
First of all, the reason why the ag land in Moreau is coming under such interest from these providers is it just so happens that our ag land has a couple of prime transmission lines running through it. And one of the things, it's a primary consideration for commercial solar, is proximity to the transmission line. If you're too far away, it doesn't become feasible, so-
To three fates.
That's what's, that's what's really putting the pressure on some of the farms. Like, for example, what you just saw in the PUD request from, uh, American Light and Energy. The reason why they're so interested in that particular site, it has a transmission line running right through the middle of it, it's, it's prime for that.
But if I understood it correctly, he wasn't planning on connecting to that transmission line.
Oh, yeah, he is.
I thought he was connecting to the three fades out on 197.
So this is all I do mainly, um, get a little bit, uh, with my national grid hat on. Approximately, yes, um, because the developer has to pay to connect, so that's on them, so if they wanna go somewhere far, far away, they're gonna pay a lot of money to hook into the grid. Um, 115s and higher are regulated by the New York State ISO. So, no, they're not gonna tap into a 115, but knowing that they can tap into a substation that then can draw the power to a higher transmission line is usually the draw. So that is why Moreau with multiple transmission lines in it, but it's, it's more the proximity to distribution and three fates.
And then the other thing, Meredith, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's also not correct that this gets put in, the, the power gets put into the, the user onsite or it's part of the local town electricity, it's not, it goes into the grid as an offset.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's more what I'm not involved in, it, it does go into the collective grid, um.
You, you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't have a solar array in Moreau and the Moreau electric, electric bills then go down because we have a solar array here, that's not how that works.
Not, no.
It just goes into the grid as an offset, um, and you still get your power from the grid.
Yeah, there are those deals out there, too, that you see in the mail, um, next amp, where you can start buying your power from a solar provider, um.
Yeah, but still, it's still a pass through, it's, it's not, and that's another thing that's normal about when you get this individually to your house. You can't, it's a very expensive procedure to have the electricity you generate from your solar panel on your roof to be used in your house. You have that battery setup and all that, it's, it just, it's put back into the grid and you get the offset benefit in your bill.
That, Jim, that's not, that's not necessarily what I understand, okay? I do know that there are a lot of farms-
That's what I've been told.
Well, I, I, there are a lot of farms out there that have onsite solar, okay? And they, their electricity does go to the grid, but they have a back feedback or whatever meter that basically judges how much electricity they're putting to the grid and that comes off of their bill. I mean, they're, they may not be using the electricity directly from the panels, but it is a direct offset to their particular use. I don't know if that would... But I don't know if that would work with a subdivision. I'm just saying for like a large user, for an industrial user, for a commercial building on our Route 9 corridor with panels on the roof, I'm pretty sure they can use the net metering for that, but I'm not positive. So, but these, I mean, that's not what's being proposed at Fox Run. That's a, that's 2.5 megs at Fox Run. That's an electric generating facility. That's a different, a different animal.
I guess I have a question for Carla.
Okay.
If, if we go forward with this and we have a situation where open farmland and the developer is putting these panels in and because I'm still putting, saying selling it back to the grid, that then becomes a commercial operation and agricultural link. Is that even, well, legal?
Well, by this law, it would be because this makes it, this is allowed to be a use on the property because it's seen not as a commercial use, but more as a public utility.
I should believe it that way.
What do you mean, they leave it that way?
Farmland is farmland and not have a commercial, even though it's a utility, somebody may get to use it on it. I don't want to see farmland doubled up.
I agree.
Okay, these are all great ideas. I don't, I'm not here to defend or, I'm here for, yeah, to answer any questions. I mean, these are all good points.
And I guess Carla...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, no, the only thing is that if somebody mentioned it's seen as a public utility, usually the public utility designation goes to transmission lines, gas lines, railroad tracks, public roads, that kind of thing. It, it doesn't necessarily go to an electrical generating facility, does it?
It does in the town of Moreau. That's how you, that's how the town has looked at allowing them and the only way the town has allowed them in the industrial park and the industrial zone.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but that's how it's always been.
Yeah, given, given how our ordinance is currently set up, there's a terminated M-zone power transmission plant or something like that, power plant. And these are viewed as power plants, that's where they're, that's why they're allowed there at the M-zone.
All right, but that, that makes sense. But I mean, as far as, is allowing them, what we're now saying is we're going to allow manufacturing in the ag zone?
Right. Good question.
That's why I'm sitting here listening to you folks. This is, this is what, right now, the answer is no. Right now, as the law that's before you says you, you cannot, if there's prime farmland, you cannot have solar. Now, if you have non-prime farmland, I guess that's the definition of it, then what's before you is you can have solar. One of the things I want to broach with you folks too is there has been a concept that Jim and I have discussed known as an overlay district. And that's something that the town board as of now did not want to put on the draft. But I wanted everyone to be aware of, you know, in lieu of, you know, saying you cannot have them in a certain district. The town then creates overlay districts and the overlay district is a little more flexible. But that's something that's not before you, but it is a, a concept that has been brought up and has been brought up by NYSERTA as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Carla, one...
The reason why I like that is an overlay district, it, these are not then allowed as a right. An overlay district has to apply each and every time and it has to go through the town board to establish a district and then it has to come to this board for the site plan review to approve it, or at least that's how I would recommend the procedure be established. So it's an extra layer of review each and every time a decision about, you know, a major power generating facility is decided and it's not allowed as a right.
So it's like a PUD then?
Correct. A PUD is essentially a floating district.
It can be, or the town can say the overlay district is, and they could draw circles and say, this is what the overlay district is, and then it wouldn't automatically always go to the town board. This is, I mean, none of that's in the law you're looking at, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Carla, was any, was there any talk about, we keep talking about prime farmland, about the non-prime land in the town that could be suitable for these? I'm looking at the Brownfield sites, Caputo, the landfill, the drag strip that are super fun sites and that's very common. You're seeing some of these developments go there. There's a lot of other layers outside of town purview, but sometimes that's suitable. You have this land that can't be used that are seen as solar. The dump on Wyble Avenue is one of them in Saratoga.
Yes.
Right. The way, Meredith, the way the town board reviewed it was district by district. So they, they decided in the draft to identify which districts solar would be allowed in and, and tier three solar would be allowed in. But again, that's one of the reasons that Jim and I were just talking about the overlay because that could encompass there, there is areas in the town that have that capacity and the potential.
Yeah.
And the acreage for these things. So that is something that, you know, is out there.
They are right next to KV's and then also you wouldn't want to put a situation where like GE wants to come 10 years from now and do something with Caputo and they'd have to get a use variance and that's
Right.
really impossible. So I wouldn't want to get a situation where we, I, I get the zoning district application, but also at the same time, there are places that this is suitable in the town throughout because of its history.
And this is Ann. I have the same kind of concerns that Meredith has. You know, one thing I think is lacking in both the draft legislation and in the comprehensive plan is that there's no real expression about when and where particularly the commercial operations of a solar plant would be desirable and prioritizing citing on productive or previously disturbed land like a landfill or, and also emphasizing the, the need to minimize the impact on agriculture in our, our area would be concepts that really need to be, I think, emphasized. And again, comp, comprehensive plan probably has to be amended in order to, you know, provide that guidance as well. I don't think when the comp plan was done, anyone contemplated solar power, or at least it wasn't mentioned.
But I will say in the comprehensive plan and the farmland protection plan for the town, that farmland is considered a priority. All right, and protecting that farmland was considered a priority. Now, there is a lot of land in our R5 zone that is not valuable, historically valuable or prime farmland. So it's not to say that there's no place in the R5 for these solar generating facilities. I just, every time I talk to a, one of the solar developers or one of the people in the town that are thinking about putting it in, they all argue that the best place for them to put it is on that flat, well-drained farmland they have. And I just, that makes me really uncomfortable. And it is mentioned over and over again that these aren't a permanent use, they're temporary. And to some degree, they are. But most of them have 25-year contracts with at least three, five-year extensions. We're talking 40 years. I don't plan on being here 40 years from now. It's a couple of generations. So it's certainly, inasmuch as it may not be a permanent use, it is not what I would consider a temporary use either.
I think once you take agricultural property out of agricultural use, the likelihood of it returning is probably quite small historically. Now, I had a couple other comments. I, I gave Carla a load of them, many of them drafting clarifications and such, but I had a couple that were maybe kind of overarching. It really has to do with the role of the planning board in the review of these projects. Particularly, well, actually, tier one, we're not involved. That's a building permit process. We are involved in the tier two and three. And I presume that in tier two, we're, and three, we'd use the same site plan review process that we have currently in the, the code. Is that correct, Carla?
That is correct. Just, just so you know, one of the things that has been raised by NYSERTA is that perhaps you guys only look at the tier three and not the tier two, but that hasn't, you know, that's just one of their comments. Because it could be more administrative.
Yeah, well, both, both of them are, at least in the current draft are set up such that it seems like the only only review that the, the planning board conducts is perhaps seeker and maybe some screening. Otherwise, it looks like all aspects, all requirements of those types of projects are set out.
For tier three?
Yeah. It's pretty, it's a pretty lengthy list of, you know, if all these things are provided or, it's almost as if we have a checklist and we go check that's been provided, check decommissioning plan, you know, and so on.
Well, if you look at section C at 149-99C, you do have site plan review standards.
So what, what site plan review would be determining that setbacks and such are met?
That's what it has in there, that they'll adhere to heightened setback requirements of the underlying zoning district.
Right, so anybody could figure that out. But what if, what if we sense that, oh gee, this is just the wrong place? It may be an appropriate or a district where it's permitted and it may be that it can meet these setback requirements, but it's really horrible. It's not a good idea.
Well, just like with every, just like with every application and not, not liking the placement of it, you, you need to have an actual, and as you know, a legal basis to deny it if it meets what's in here. Just because the board is not comfortable with, you know, where it's located, if it meets the requirements, then it should go forward. But I mean, to your point, that's exactly why we're talking to you. I mean, these are things that the town board would not have thought of because they don't do what you folks do.
Again, the way I read this is that we go down the list, we determine the height, setback, light, watt size and so on, which are fairly easy to calculate, are done, and then we're left with screening maybe, you know, what kind of burns. Yep, not as desirable.
And roads.
Visual impact is there.
Visual impact. Yep.
Visual impact should be the big...
Well, I think maybe it gets back to the, the concern about how the comprehensive plan is written and where these types of projects are considered desirable. And manufacturing industrial makes sense, but then we have R5 for a tier three.
Yeah, I'm going to speak up and, you know, as you guys know, I work for one of the companies proposing one of the sites. So, you know, you can take that as it, as it lies. The, the argument against solar and manufacturing and industrial is that it doesn't create the jobs that are desired by the M1 or, you know, those commercial districts. It's a, so usually it's, it gets gets a sideways look there because it doesn't, it doesn't fit the, you know, it fits the, the definition if you look at industrial or commercial, but it doesn't fit the economic reasoning for those districts, you know, and that was one of the, one of the points made. There was a solar development that was presented, I don't know, maybe two or three years ago for the industrial park off Bloomberg. And that was one of the considerations that you're using up acreage, you know, in something that's zoned for, you know, perhaps a more job-intensive use. You know, just speaking to that one. And, you know, it's, you know, it's tricky because, you know, for the, for the, the, the sites that would be presented under tier three, they are very limited, as Meredith said, to transmission lines. And, you know, this is where perhaps, as Carla mentioned, overlay district may be the best bet. Because it's not, it's not, you know, it's not going to run rampant because the infrastructure's not there. You know, it, it's all about the transmission. And I'm not, you know, I, I don't work on this stuff. I know about it because my company's doing it. You know, I'm, I'm on the rivers, I'm a hydroelectric guy, but it's, you know, it's, it is, it is constrained by the infrastructure that's in place and you're not going to, no one's going to change that. You know, you can't build new transmission lines, not really, you know, so you're...
Hey Carla, Carla, you know, it might be a reasonable request to make, particularly with our supervisor's newfound power at the county, is the request that GIS exercise be done.
Yeah, I, I was going to...
And map all the sites in Moreau on a predetermined basis that meet the qualification standard for proximity to a substation or a transmission line. And you're going to know right up front to the acre what envelope, what building envelope you're dealing with in the town.
And, you know, Jim, I...
And where it's located.
And I can, I can do that. I can ask if we can do that, reach out to you.
Yeah, I, if you can do that, Carla, and then add layers for the, you know, for the prime soil classifications and then, you know, also, and then while we're at it, take a look and highlight in your steep slopes, you know, areas that are not buildable for anything.
I can ask them to do that. I, I, yeah, I don't know. They may turn around to me and say, yeah, no, we're too busy, but...
It's not hard exercise. Within a couple of days, they can get there and you can get down to the acreage, what the net result is, where it's located and what lots are involved.
Can I ask a question, please, just for clarification? We keep talking about transmission lines. And I think somebody told me earlier that phase three isn't what they're tying into. What transmission lines are these particular facilities looking for?
If it's, if it's utility scale, then you're looking probably at, you know, when I say utility scale in the megawatt size, you're usually looking at, you know, 34.5 or 115 KV.
Okay, so that's high voltage. That's not three-phase?
Well, it, it is three-phase, but it's three-phase high voltage. It's not, it's, it's not disperation voltages.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is it's, it seems to be listed that's some kind of a limitation, but the, the dozens of people that have pulled in my yard trying to get 40 acres of my land for solar panels have said that they can hook right up to the power lines on Fort Stowe Road. That's why they're in my yard. Now, that, that means it's a county highway and that's a pretty standard power feed. That's not a wow, it's going to be hard to find those lines kind of situation. So, yeah, I would agree. It would be kind of nice to know where they're looking at and what's, you know, potential build out for something like this.
Right, you know...
I will do that. I'll see what I can do.
I have one further question for Carla, clarification actually.
Sure.
Under our site plan review standards, they're listing a particular lot coverage. Are we in this instance referring to solar panels only or solar panels plus other infrastructure events would be considered as part of that coverage?
My understanding is it's the panels.
Just the panels.
That's my understanding.
I think that's correct.
And perhaps we should clarify that make a panel of lot coverage for some common reasons. We've got these buildings over here, so you got to dump them.
Okay.
Carla, could you explain a little bit about how the pilot agreements would work, particularly in agricultural districts? I do understand that if this law is adopted, that the town will have the option of entering into a pilot agreement. I do understand that if this law is adopted, that the town will have the option of entering into a pilot agreement that would reduce the amount of tax that the landowner has to pay. And I'm curious as to how that actually works insofar as it would appear that the panels or the arrays are actually personal property? And so does this.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I just, you, if, if you could explain just how that works.
Sure, absolutely. This is an ever-changing area of the law, and within the last few months, there was a case that came down talking about this. But the way, the way the current real property tax law is written is the towns have the option. The way the town of Monroe code is going to be written is, it's not an option that the town is requiring them to get the pilot, to enter into a pilot agreement. So, the way the courts have held that, especially in agricultural land, the land itself, for example, if I own the land and I get an ag exemption on it, but then, and you come in and you own and you put on, this is like, you're a different company and you come in and you put on the panels. The ag exemption is reduced on the amount of area that the, the panels would be. And then those panels would be taxable, so to speak. So the way folks are dealing with that now is to just say, we are going to require a pilot agreement. And the folks that own the solar panels have to pay the taxes, you know, the payment in lieu of taxes for them to be in the area. That being said, there is a proposed or recommended calculation that NYSERDA puts out that says how much each taxing jurisdiction can get from, for example, national grid. If it's national, you know, they're going into national grids. Generally speaking, in this area with the national grid, it's about, I want to say it's either thirty-five hundred, I think it's about thirty-five hundred or five thousand per megawatt, I believe. Don't quote.
I think in Glendale, we just passed, we just passed that, we just passed this provision in our law, we got seventy-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, you're jumping ahead of me there, Jim. But what I'm saying is there's a recommended calculation. And to your point, you put this in one of your response, one of your comments to me. That's all of the taxing jurisdictions combined, but the, but so county, town, school district. All three are going to require a pilot in the town of Monroe. All three would be capped at a certain amount if we went with NYSERDA's calculation. But as Jim indicated, we're not required to, so it's really a discussion that the town board is going to have to identify the amount that they're going to require, so.
The, the town has the option to require a full assessment, doesn't it?
Well, because it's a pilot, we have the option, we're, we're not going to do the full set, we're going to put down whatever the town board wants. They haven't discussed a number yet. They just wanted, and working with the assessors office, they wanted this implemented into the law right now.
But it would be, but they're contemplating then something less than full assessment.
They may or may not be. They haven't discussed a number yet.
Okay. But if they don't have, if they don't have a pilot, it would be full assessment.
Well, no, because they're exempt. They're, they're, the, the land, the land will be exempt, so the ag exemption, you know, would be there on the land. And then the area on the land that the panels are on, the courts are back and forth on whether or not they are exempt.
The ag exemption, the ag exemption is only for active farmland.
Understood, understood. But we're presuming that the rest of the farmland is actually being actively farmed.
Okay, but the, where the solar panels are is not actively farmed.
Right, so that would not be part of the, that's why I'm saying the ag exemption will be reduced.
Okay, all right.
But then.
I just wanted to make sure I understood you.
The, the array, the array is going to be taxed as a solar power operation.
Correct.
Saying it, we would enter into a pilot agreement, but I, I thought the pilot agreement was something you could provide or not provide for in the legislation.
It is, it, it is in the, in the state legislation, however, towns are given the option to incorporate in their town code under home rule that we are requiring it.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering why.
Um, well, because it's, it benefits the town to do that, because there is, you know, each year, these, the folks are going to bring Article seven cases claiming that they should be exempt, claiming that they, because the law is all over the place, they're going to say, no, we should be exempt, therefore, or we should be not, we should not be assessed as high, and now we'd have to go through the litigation for all of that. So one of the things that many assessors across the state are doing is requiring pilots because that gives some certainty to not only the town, but it gives certainty to the solar companies as well. They know how much they're going to have to pay over the next, you know, the term of the pilot.
So the pilot then takes into consideration the change of use of the land?
Correct.
So it's no longer designated as active farmland ag exemption?
That area is not. A pilot is in lieu of taxes, so this is like a separate agreement we would have with them. They would have.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is this, is that land still listed as active farmland even though you're getting a pilot payment for the use, or is it changing the designation of the ag exemption completely as far as where the panels are?
That's a question for the assessor, how she clarified, how she quantifies that.
Okay, all right.
But the pilot applied at tier two as well?
Tier three only.
Okay, so if a farmer puts a, a tier two system up to provide a hundred and ten percent of the farmer's requirements, then their tax exemption is not going to be affected.
Correct. Right, as it's right now, it's tier three only, and that's how it is in most areas.
Yeah, and I think, I think that makes sense because if they're putting up a solar array for their own agricultural purposes, that's probably considered an agricultural use. It is covered by ag and markets.
Yeah, I mean, the same thing with if I wanted to put a solar or a windmill here at the farm, as long as the windmill doesn't generate more than a hundred and ten percent of my use, there's, it's really all covered under ag and markets. The even, you know, height limitations and everything else, the windmill is considered an ag structure because it's producing electricity for the ag production. So the same would go with the solar panels, I would assume.
Correct.
And decommissioning, who reports out whether or not they are functioning properly or generating electricity?
That's actually something that was brought up by NYSERDA as well, so that's something that we have to look at as to how it would be, you know, how the decommissioning plan would ascertain, because you don't want the town to go down and do, you know, how, how's the town going to go and enforce that? So that's something that does need to be discussed. I don't have an answer for you. That's something that, that needs to be discussed.
The other question I've got is on the four thousand square foot coverage limitation for the solar panels in tier two. I was wondering where that came from. It didn't seem to relate to anything.
Honestly, I do not know. Like I said, this was, this went over, there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen.
Oh, yeah. No, I know.
I mean, basically, the four thousand square feet comes from the definition of a tier two system, which establishes a cap of the four thousand square feet of the solar panel surface area, not lot covered, so it's a little different there, and that's something that I was working with NYSERDA on. So the four thousand square feet is really the solar panel surface, the area of the solar panels, the surface, not the lot coverage area.
And a question regarding building integrated systems. I would think that they would just be general building permit material, not even considered a tier one.
Under the model law, they're considered, considered tier one. So that's why they were incorporated in the town law. But I mean, it's, I'm taking your, I'm taking all the points down, so.
Okay.
We can go back.
No, that's a question I.
Tier one is considered onsite use, though, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I guess I, I had the same question about the four thousand square foot, because if a, if a facility in our, in a zone that allows for a tier one setup can use more than four thousand square feet of solar panels onsite, why would we limit that?
The four thousand is a tier two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my mistake.
That's okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's a lot of panels.
It is, yeah.
It's almost two hundred and thirty panels, and a typical house would use fourteen to thirty-six.
Or any further questions for Carla? Or comments?
I guess the only comment I would say. Oh, go ahead.
If people have individual comments, you can email me and we can, I'll make sure we pass them around to both town board and the zoning board.
Is Carla going to distribute our notes from tonight, too, or should we still follow up?
I have handwritten notes, and I think I can read them. And I think Jim was probably taking notes as well. Okay, so we can all, you know, I will put together a summary of everything that I put down. I think Jim will do the same. He did that with the ZBA. I don't want to tell Jim what to do, but I thought that was helpful.
Yeah, I'll do the same here, and again, if I, if I didn't capture your comment correctly, or or was too short, certainly embellish or provide further detail, and I'll make sure that gets passed around to everybody.
So everybody knows kind of, I know there are some attendees on that have a particular interest in these. The, at, the next step really would be kind of putting all of these together and compiling everything, and then going back to the town board and saying, okay, these are all the comments that we've received from NYSERDA and the planning and the zoning board. You know, let's hash this out, let's get a working draft, and then we can go out to the public. And, you know, with any luck, when we do that, we'll actually, you know, maybe we'll be able to, to see some members of the public in lieu of having a, a full Zoom meeting, but at this point, that's kind of where we are at this. I, I don't want to say that we are definitely doing that, or that there's any kind of, you know, public hearing or anything scheduled as of yet, so I just want everybody to be aware, especially the attendees online, that at this point, we will compile everyone's comments and bring it back to the town board, and then the town board can look at that and decide what they want to do.
Very good, Carla. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Or, anything further? I have one item before we go. And we have coming up, as you may be aware, a public hearing for a solar farm. In our deliberations, we have concentrated whether we feel that this application meets the requirements of the PUD. I would urge everyone before the next meeting to think about what other things should we be considering in this PUD application? Don't have tunnel vision for is it legal or not, because the legality of it really is not up to us. So think of everything you may want to question as you, as we go into our deliberations.
The fifteenth, right?
That's on to the April nineteenth for public hearing.
So that's going to be the lengthy public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
So we don't schedule anything else that night?
Well, I'll come to you guys, everybody. Yeah, that's going to.
You folks have three other public hearings scheduled for April nineteenth. I thought, you scheduled a couple tonight.
Yeah, but one of them's not very controversial. That'll be a, you know, crickets in the background kind of one, so.
Two of them could attract a lot of attention. Arrowhead could attract a lot of attention, and I think certainly the PUD request will as well.
Yes.
Does anyone have anything else for that, or do we go back to having the two meetings again?
Well, you scheduled a public hearing. We can't change that.
Correct.
Well.
Well, actually, like, like, for example, next week's not too bad. I think there's November, I think there's two items on the agenda. Next week's is not, the regular March meeting is not bad, but April's already got at least three items.
So I guess my question is, do we schedule a March or April? Or are we here now and you study? That's enough.
I guess the question really, come on, I'm going to jump, I, I, we might lose her. Is it appropriate or allowed for us to limit during public hearing individuals' comments to a certain amount of time?
Yes.
The, the organizational meeting limits comments in public hearing to five minutes per individual.
That's incredibly reasonable.
And I think you also have a opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to hold off on second-time commenters until everybody's heard at least once.
And how many times can they comment? Is it just twice?
As many times as you want them to.
How many times can they listen?
As many times as you want them to, but there are ways that public hearings are held, and especially in the Zoom era, so to speak. There are ways that I can work with you to make sure we have this all set so that everyone is, can speak, but everyone is not repeating everyone else's comments.
Okay.
And we also say that it has to be application-based, just so somebody doesn't want to get up and talk about climate change and renewables and the broader picture.
So what I'm saying is, Jim, is there anything else coming in for the April nineteenth meeting?
There, there's another PUD lurking out there in the shadows, but it won't make it until, it won't make it to this board until May at the earliest, I would suspect.
So that we're not here to level one with climate.
And I don't know of anything else. There's going to be some, I think, substantial reconstructions on a couple of properties on Route nine. You know, I think that are probably a result of the sewer. So.
But we have permission to hold committees in March, if necessary.
We have to.
So Mike, Mike, would you like Jim to contact us if something else comes up to see if we would like to split it into two meetings, or?
You know, John, I do. I think that's important because I, I, I find myself here much after ten o'clock at night, and I and I have to be working all day.
Well, that.
Being here until the eleven o'clock hour, I, I think that's unreasonable to be doing, conducting business. I just.
Well, that, that's what we did that resulted in this meeting. You know, I, we had, we had eight applications come in, and some of them, by the nature of the applicant was complex and, you know, lengthy, so we tried to balance the two meetings out, and I think it worked out pretty well. I mean, I know it's late now, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's, they were about the same amount of substance with each, each meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I would say, I think.
Well, I'm going to say, Mike, if that's, if that's what you're asking, Mike, then I'm going to agree with you. That Jim should get ahold of us if there's more stuff that shows up and see how we feel about it and if we want to split it into two meetings.
Very good, thank you.
All right, I'll keep an eye on it and notify you accordingly.
Perfect, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Hart, do you have anything for us?
Nope, I'm all set.
All set. If that's the case, we'll adjourn the motion.
Motion to adjourn, yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made, this is adjourned second. Right, motion is made as second. Any further discussion? If not, this is paper I.
All right.
Bye.
Bye. Abstentions.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, night.
Good night.
So Jim, you know, are we gone?
Hold on.
I just want to know how much we lost.
No knock, no knocks on the door.